You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one. Heard around the world. Sherman marched with the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Well, good evening. We would like to call our Monday, June 22 special meeting to order. At this time, we will start with the invocation. We'll ask that Minister DJ here, if he wouldn't mind, give us the prayer, if we could all stand for that, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we just thank you for another opportunity to applaud you and to glorify you. We thank you, Father, for great weather, a busy week. We thank you for beautiful, beautiful Father's Day. Lord, we're asking you now just to continue to stay ahead of us. Let us go about doing the business of the city of Fayetteville. Let us, Father, please, think about people first and us second. Lord, we ask you to help guide our minds and our thoughts that we will be doing the business properly, Father. And, Lord, we just thank you for so much. We just thank you for taking care of us all through the night. And, Lord, as we bring this meeting to an end, as we go home, we ask you, Father, to let us find our homes as we left them. And all of these requests, Father, we bring before you. We bring it before you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Minister, Councilmember here. Counselor, as you know, our special meeting, we have kind of a tight agenda. We are back to our buttons, so we're thankful for that. We do have our sneeze shields to make sure that we are practicing safe social distancing and separation in the midst of COVID. Certainly, the goal is to still continue to operate the meeting under the principles of parliamentary procedures. So please, press your buttons. We'll try to track it and acknowledge you. And we will, because of the tight window and timeline of our next meeting that is following this one, we will ask that we have limited our discussion, maybe two rounds per item, and we'll adjust as necessary. But at this time, we ask, as we consider the approval of the agenda, I have a request from City Manager of a couple of time-sensitive items that Counsel, if you would, request. The first one, and where's the manager? Mr. Hewitt here? All right. So, Mr. Hewitt, I'll turn it over to you. We'd like to ask the Counsel to consider.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, members of Counsel. As the Mayor mentioned, there are two items. The first item is a follow-up to ask the Counsel to discuss the Yellow Movement and give staff direction as to the location and phrases that you would like to see. The second item that we would ask Counsel to add to the agenda is one that would authorize the Mayor to execute an agreement with the Public Works Commission for the additional transfer of funds. And at your place, Staff has laid a City Council action memo, and we can walk you through that at the appropriate time as well. But those are the two items, sir. One is on the Yellow Movement and the other is to authorize the Mayor to execute an agreement with the Public Works Commission for the additional transfer related to COVID-19 general fund losses. Those are the two items.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So Counsel, if it is your pleasure, we can add that as item 6.06. Also, per the request of the Attorney, we have a closed session, but in opposed to it coming at item 5.0, we would ask that you would consider doing the closed session at the end of the discussion of the other items. So Counselmember Ingram?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of item 6.06, the Yellow Movement, and item 6.07, the, what was it, for the PWC item?
Okay, thank you. There's a motion by Counselmember Ingram. There's a second by Counselmember Wright.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Is that also to move the closed session to the end? Because it's currently listed as 5.0.
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to make sure that was included in the motion.
Counselwoman Ingram, would you consider relocation of item 5.0 to, after that last item?
Yes, sir. Would you like me to restate that?
Please.
Okay. Mayor Colvin, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of item 6.06, the Yellow Movement, additional item 6.07, the PWC item, to allow the Mayor to execute, and moving the closed session to be item, item number, City Attorney?
That's all right.
Okay. 6.8.
All right. So Counsel, there's a motion, amended motion by Counselmember Ingram. There was a second by Counselmember Wright. Any discussion on, Counselwoman, whatever?
Mayor Colvin, I'd like to ask the Counsel to consider moving the item regarding the Yellow Movement to the first-line item versus the last-line item, if possible.
Oh, okay. So what you're saying, to make her amendment for just that one item, 6.001 or something like that?
However that would work. I'm not sure the specifics of how that would work. But just if we could change those two items and...
Well, so since it's a motion by you all, I guess that's a friendly amendment request to see if you accept it. You're good with that, sir? All right. So the amended motion, let me just restate it. We've had a lot in here, is to approve the agenda with the following changes, to take the Yellow Movement and make that item 6.01, oh, 6.005 or something, but the first item under the six-point items. The last one would be to add item 6.06, the interlocal agreement, PWC discussion, and to relocate the closed session to the end of this series. Is that right? All right. So Counsel, any further discussion? All right. Look to you for your votes. Adam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. All right. Item 6.001, Yellow Movement. Mr. Manager? Guess we don't need a lot of background with that.
No, sir. I think that the first order, Mayor, if I could, would be to pick the location. There was conversation earlier about picking the four crosswalks around the Market House. In front of you, you also see a location of the no-travel zone around the Market House, not just the crosswalks, but around the Market House. And then also in front of you, you see a diagram that shows phrases written on the street in front of the Police Department and City Hall and parking garage right out front. And so those are the three locations that, at present, have been discussed. There was also a discussion about something along Franklin Street in front of the shops. There's also been discussion about Pittman Street. But I think the ones tonight, Mayor, are around the Market House in some location, the crosswalks or in the no-travel zone, and/or in front of the Police Department, City Hall, parking garage here on Hay Street. And so if the Counsel could give some consideration to that and then move to possibly the phrases that you would like to have included at those locations.
Okay, thank you. So Counsel, as you know, so just to kind of unpack this, so I would like probably the first part of the discussion for the Counsel to decide whether you want to locate the larger, the larger lettering, which would be the two choices were in front of the City Hall and the police station or around City Hall, around the Market House. So Counselwoman Ingram, you had a question?
City Manager, can you, a question and a kind of a statement. City Manager, can you give some idea of how, I know the Counsel's direction was to hand it off to a committee and allow them to help us with verbiage and location. Can you give us kind of what their recommendations were? And following that, Mayor, I would be, I think we've had a lot of discussion on this. And Mayor Colvin and Counsel, I'd be prepared to make the motion after.
I think we've got a couple rounds on that, so we'll come to you. And I had had one request prior to that. But I'll, Mr. Manager, if you can answer her question, and then I'll go to the next set of questions.
Bianca, do you want to try? Come to the podium, please. We have with us Bianca Shoneman, Director and CEO of the Cool Springs District.
Hello.
And she also coordinated a committee of volunteers and interested parties in downtown that came up with a variety of very creative ideas. And I'm sure she'll be happy to share some of that with you. But ultimately, Counsel, as you know, this is your decision. And she and I are here just to support you in whatever decision you make.
Certainly. So a few weeks ago, we were asked to sort of assess the built environment around the crosswalks to implement the Yellow Movement. And we went out front of the crosswalks and we looked and we noticed that there were a lot of inconsistencies in the crosswalks. From curb to curb, the width and spacing was very different. Some of the crosswalks are cobblestones, some are not. And that led us to sort of look at alternative motions or alternative locations, although we weren't given that guidance. And so we looked at the no-drive zone around the Market House, which was right in our Vista, which is a yellow line that encircles the Market House about 10 feet in diameter. Then we also looked at Franklin Street, which is an underutilized commercial node in our central business district. We presented those to the committee, and the committee came up with some lettering and some spacing to determine the best possible location for those. We gave those to you guys, and then we were asked to submit some additional locations in front of the Police Department. So that's where we are tonight. You know, I think our committee felt pretty strongly about saying Black Lives Matter because it is part of the current movement. But ultimately, we fully recognize that it is Counsel's will.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Counselmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. I would, we've discussed this. We've discussed this. We've looked at these different options. We've looked at the alternatives. We've been making phone calls. We've been talking about it. And unless our objective this evening is to really just state for the record our position, I think that if it pleases the Counsel, we have three choices before us. I can, I would like to say that, to me, this is the most impactful design. When we were making phone calls, the calls that, and the reason I say this is the most impactful design is because aesthetically, it is the boldest design. When, as we were discussing offline individually as Counselmembers, it seemed that we were in agreement, for the most part, that the two phrases, "End Racism Now" and "Black Lives Matter," were important phrases. I do recognize that some of us on Counsel would like to delineate from the movement and stick with the sentiment. And so the suggestion was made to say, "Black lives do matter," and I'm amenable to that. And sent you guys the email asking how many of you, you know, if we could consider that as an alternative. But I hope that when Counselmember Ingram decides to make her motion, my hope is that she will make a motion that we will support this layout and that we will support the verbiage, "End Racism Now" and "Black Lives Do Matter," because they do. And as has been indicated, this is not, we're not just doing this to write on the ground. We're doing this to make a statement of solidarity with our citizens who look like many of us, who want to be recognized and want to be regarded and want people to know that we agree that our lives as Black individuals do matter. And so I hope that we will not over-articulate this tonight. I hope that we will make this move and we will move on to the next item of business.
Thank you, Counselmember Waddell. Counselmember Wright, and before that, there was an arrangement that Counselmember Kinston, I would call on her about it, since this was kind of, kind of hers. So but everyone has something to say. We'll use our one round, but I just want to make sure that we're not delineating who makes what because I think that she had, I had spoken with her prior to the start of the meeting. Counselmember Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree that Black Lives Matter needs to be somewhere in the discussion and that it should be one of the vocal points because that's what we're talking about across the nation and across the world. This design around the Market House, I like as well. It is the...
So?
I'm sorry. I'm not speaking loud enough. It is the point that I think we're trying to make across the nation is that the history that we've had in our country, we've come into a turning point. So the Market House being the center of our city, I think a lot of people, and I'm glad that the downtown alliance, it's at the Cool Springs, came up with these designs as a, you know, a point that the community is involved. So I do agree with that and I like that. Is that A or B? I like the Market House design.
I got you.
Thank you.
All right. Counselmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm the one that did send the email about the Black Lives Do Matter. And the reason I did that is I did some investigating into the Black Lives Matter organization. It's founded by three women, two of whom are admitted Marxists. In fact, one of them says, "I am a trained Marxist." Now, I'm not sure everybody knows who Karl Marx was. He wrote a number of books, probably the most famous of which is The Communist Manifesto. And I consider myself an American first, a patriot second. And I'm not going to support anything that has anything to do with Marxism. Now, I will support Black Lives Do Matter. I think that that makes Fayetteville unique and it shows Fayetteville leading. I will support how it's designed around the Market House. Believe me, I've fielded lots of calls, maybe from more of my constituents that may look like me and that have, they probably aren't going to vote for me again, but that's okay. I'm the one that also mentioned we should look towards utilizing the Market House possibly as a African-American museum. What better way to signify the progress in Fayetteville, North Carolina, would be to put a picture of our mayor beside a plaque honoring his great-great-granddad who was sold there as a slave? That shows real progress. Nowhere else in America can you show a picture of a mayor that I know of, and I'd love to be corrected on that. So, Mr. Mayor, that's my comments, and I'll wait for the motion, and then I'll offer an amendment if necessary. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counselman Davis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. I feel uncomfortable with saying Black Lives Matter. Not because of the fact that Black lives don't matter, but because I am doing my research and I believe that we are unique here in Fayetteville. And so I'm open to saying Black lives do matter. And I just want to challenge us to get through this so that we can do what we were hired to do, elected to do, and that's pass policy that changes lives and stop spending time arguing over what we're going to paint on the ground. That's not going to fix people's lives in Fayetteville, and that's not going to bring us into alignment with any nefarious organization. I challenge everybody to actually go study what Black Lives Matter is, why it was founded, what it was founded for. Our voices should be unique. We are a unique city. And so I want to get this done. I'm down for Black Lives Do Matter. Let's find out where to put it. I am upset that unity is not a part of what we're doing because at the end of the day, in a city that's half one and half the other, we need unity. And so we need to find someplace, according to the first proposal that Ms. Kinston put up, to put slogans like "One Nation, One People," "Choose Love," "Equality Now." And that's all I have to say. I'm ready for the motion.
Thank you, sir. Do have Counselmember here. Counsel, remember, there will be a second consideration that you'll have after this with some more specifics about those phrase words. Counselmember here?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counselwoman Kinston, for your initiative. Over the weekend, I had celebrated Father's Day in a way that I didn't, hadn't planned. I went to a cookout at a neighbor's house and I had a conversation to talk to a 92-year-old mother. And as we began to talk, and we, of course, you know, I'm talking about some things that's happened in the city. And I mentioned what's going on and let the Yellow Movement and kind of brought her up to speed with it. And I told her what we were faced with. And this 92-year-old mother say, "Well, it's about time." So I will be supporting Black Lives Do Matter, and we can go from there. I will be supporting Black Lives Do Matter.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Counselmember here. And Counsel, I'll just conclude it with this because we have a tight, tight window. I certainly, you know, my goal was to allow, not to allow the discussion to be lost in what I favor, kind of let Counsel work that out. And just for those who've had falsehoods that were put out in the press, the job of the Mayor Pro Tem is, as I did, was to call and get a consensus when we are split on something. When we don't have an agreement, when we walk away from this dais, from a meeting, someone has to make the calls. And so I'd like to commend, the Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to commend, Counselmember Waddell. Those folks make calls after hours. That's the part that you don't see. It's how we get on one accord for these meetings. And so at the end of the day, I do support a strong statement from the city of Fayetteville. But as I said in my comments, I am more concerned with us living the Black lives that matter in our government and in our actions and in our resources. And so I think that this is a great first step. So however, the Counsel's pleasure, Counselmember Kinston, and I know you had proposed a lot of this, you're Counselmember Ingram, but I had talked to you beforehand. You put a lot of work in. You don't say much. You just smile. But at this time, I want to call on you to make the motion for this great thought. If you're amenable to what the Counselmembers adding do, that's fine. And then maybe be fair about it, maybe we can go with a second from Counselmember Ingram, and then we can get this behind us. So Counselmember Kinston?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank each member of the Counsel for supporting the Yellow Movement. It's taken a while for us to get here, and definitely there has been a lot of conversations. Also thanking the citizens for their emails, their input, and expressing how they actually feel. As I always said, you know, it's that feeling that you get back. And I want to make sure that as we go forward with the Yellow Movement, that the citizens do understand this is a means to bring the city together, to start the healing, to start the conversations. We are about policy and making sure that policies are followed and making new policies that are needed. So with that being said, I would like to make a motion for the Yellow Movement to accept the Yellow Movement with, at the location of the Market House, reading "Black Lives Do Matter" and "Racism Now."
There's a motion by Counselmember Kinston. There's a second by Counselmember Ingram. Any further discussion? I think we've discussed it. All right, Counsel, let me clear the boards. All right, all those in favor? All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Mr. Manager, get to work. Let's get some paint on the ground. All right, Counsel, good job. Counsel, also, before we move on to this item, there was a, there was a nice presentation that was given to us by Cool Springs when we were discussing this about putting something inspiring in our four crosswalks in and around the area. I think that, you know, we had some debate with that, but I think that the common themes that were agreed upon were hope, unity, hope, unity, understanding, and love, I think. That was the first, okay. So Counselwoman Kinston, I know you had sent some of these recommendations. Does this reflect the way you remember it, just so we can make sure? Counsel, or any other words, but I just wanted to get clarity for the staff and for the public as to whether we were still going to put a nice inspiration of hope in our crosswalks, like the renderings we were shown by Cool Springs earlier in this process. Counselmember, Mr. Manager, you had a question?
One of the things that we can do, with your permission, if you do come up with the terminology, given that we are going to be making such a bold statement around the Market House, I think I feel very comfortable asking Bianca to come up with other appropriate locations for the unity, "Choose Love," "One Nation, One People," or "Other Inspiring," and come back to Counsel with that. One of the considerations that they came up with for Franklin Street was that you would, you can actually use this as a way to draw people to other areas of downtown. And so using that as a model, it might be an opportunity at other locations. If you come up with that language, which again was hope, "Choose Love," unity, and "One Nation, One People," which there was some concern about that actual phrase, though, as well, that, but I'm sure we'd be able to come up with something that, alternative, or use that if Counsel feels very strongly about it as well.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I, I don't want to belabor it, but I do know that we had eight phrases that we were talking about in the texts that I sent out to get approved. And the one that, and Counselmember Kinston sent out a great email explaining the Yellow Movement and why she was so passionate about it. And at the, her last paragraph, she said, "What I would like to see for my, for the city of Fayetteville, or my city, I'm sorry, I'm not getting the right words." But she's put them in bold letters, and she was speaking from her heart, and it said, "Hope, unity, understanding, and love." And we all read it, and we all said, "We like that." And that's where, that's where I think it kind of derailed a little bit. But the other one was, if the Mayor can give me that piece back?
Yes?
Yes. So the other one was, "Equality Now, End Racism, One Nation, One People, Choose Love." I agree. I think it would be great to have something on Franklin Street to do a bold statement, or wherever Cool Springs decides to do it. But we have, we've used one of them. But we have seven great possibilities here that we have all said are good. So I would ask that we give these to Cool Springs and let them come back and tell us where they think that it would do a lot of effect on the Yellow Movement, if everybody's okay with that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilwoman Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor. As the representative of District Two, which encompasses Cool Springs Downtown District and the downtown in itself, we as a council have to get really comfortable with discussing how we are bringing arts and culture into our district. Downtown is a arts and entertainment district. That's what, what is, that's what Cool Springs is. It is an arts and entertainment district. So we're going to have more conversations that talk about putting paint on the street and putting murals on our buildings. And we, if we have this much of a problem with just trying to move that ahead, I fear of what, what that will look like moving forward. I spent time living in Atlanta, so I know what it looks like, I know what it feels like. But having this art and culture and the entertainment in one area, bringing, bringing diversity to a district where not so long ago, some felt it was an energy of not everybody was welcome and some do still probably feel that way. We have to get more comfortable addressing, we're going to have more projects like this. And so to the project that was mentioned in the recommendation, I am very supportive of it. I'm not necessarily supportive of holidays, more so festivals that happen in the downtown Cool Springs District. So we're not kind of keying it to holidays. As far as the recommendation to put something on Franklin Street, I would support that. I would just take out "End Racism" because we're already going to put it on the Market Square.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ingram. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would, I would ask that we allow the verbiage that we've put out to stand on its own for a little while because I don't want us to gloss past that message. And I don't want us to look like we're, we're all over the place with what we're doing. I want us to be very specific with this and let's rest in this and let's let this message permeate our community and then let's go from there. And I'm going to say this because if we are going to move quickly into other phrases, I'm concerned about the phrase "One Nation, One People" because we are one nation, many people. And that's what makes us great. And I think when we start to say "One Nation, One People," the ideology is that we should all be the same and we should all, you know, there should, there should have to be assimilation to belong to this nation. When that's, that's not an accurate statement of fact. And, and so I would just hope that, and as my counterpart has pointed out, it took us a long time to get here. So I think that if we are, if we are going to allow these artistic projects to move forward in our community, I think that we should step back and we should let our community step forward and lead and guide in this initiative. Because we have some, some powerhouses in this community who are able to articulate the sentiment of the community as well as, if not better than we are. So I would hope that right now, we would allow this project to move forward. And then if at some point, there's, there's a desire to continue to embrace and expand the Yellow Movement, that we would pull in our community partners and let them be a part of that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So Council, before I go to Councilman Davis, I want to give you something to consider. I think this is different from the average mural or street painting because of the time we're in and the message we're trying to send. So I agree with what she said, that this gives an opportunity to make a clear, bold statement of where this city is on racism and the importance of black lives. So I agree with that. What I would also ask you to consider, however, is that we have a big city that is bigger than the downtown area. That as we talk about what to do where, let's have a conversation about, be real thoughtful about how we include the entire city. Because as we're talking about bringing people together from racial and ethnic backgrounds, we need to bring people together that have felt disconnected from downtown, which they feel have received the bulk of resources and some communities have received nothing. And, you know, this could be the start of something big. I think I agree with Councilman Waddell. Pause could be good, let us, give us some time to put some thought in it. But let's look bigger than downtown as we talk about it. So that's, that's just what I wanted to add to that. So I'll go to Councilman Davis and then Wright and then we got to move, guys.
Yeah, I just want to make it a comment. I definitely agree with Councilwoman Waddell. I think the "One Nation, One, Many People" is a more clearer message entitled than "One Nation, One People." So I definitely agree with the "One Nation, Many People" because we are definitely, that's what makes America, America. So I agree with that. That's all.
Alright, Councilor Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to make a comment and I really like what Councilmember Dawkins was saying, that Fayetteville, the all-American city, that we could lead the way in this. And I like the fact that that statement, "We can lead the way." "We can be an example to the rest of the country." In the sense that we are, you know, we've won the all-American city, I think about three times in our past and because of Fort Bragg and the culture in which we live in Fayetteville. I'm very proud to live here, I love Fayetteville, and that's why I made it my home. We're living in a time as elected officials where, you know, everything that we do and say is scrutinized. But we must take both steps and both statements and we have to be united. And in this, I'm satisfied that these statements are good. But what the mayor just said, that Fayetteville is a large city, the sixth largest city in the state. And so to encompass Fayetteville with different things to make them feel apart, I agree with that wholeheartedly. It's not just about our downtown, although we can make a statement here, but we need to encompass our whole city. So in our research and planning of future goals and future things to encompass us, we need to really look beyond just the downtown area. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Alright, Council. So if we could, seems like the consensus is, is to allow Cool Springs to come back with some options for us and move forward from there. So if we can get a motion to support that, we can move to the next item.
Mayor Cole? Mayor Cole, and I'd like to make a motion to allow Cool Springs to come back to us. I would like to make a motion to allow Cool Springs to come back to us with some verbiage options for Franklin Street and to include the City of Fayetteville in about 60 days?
Well, we, so would your motion allow them to come back with concepts or specific to Franklin Street?
Concepts.
Okay.
Because I'm just, I'm just following the sentiment of letting the message stand alone. Come back to us in about 60 days to include concepts of including the entire city within.
So, so we'll be out in July, so maybe by the August timeframe?
Yes.
That work for everyone? Please.
I think that what I was hearing from around the dais was, right now, that we're at a stop point. And that there's really no requirement for further action tonight until we get past what we're doing right now. So maybe we come back together, maybe we pause right now and we come back together in August or September and we say, now where do we go from here? But I don't think we need to give Cool Springs directive because I don't really think that they'll be in a position to make decisions outside of the Cool Springs footprint. And if this is something that we want to see expand outside of this area, it might be we need to work with the Arts Council because they're not confined to the downtown footprint. Or it may be that we need to, there may be other community partners that we could consider. But I think tonight, we may be ready to just move to the next agenda item. I think we've, that's just what I'm thinking, but I leave it at the, at the pleasure of the council.
Alright, so if it is, we need to probably put some structure to it, I would say, Council. So if, if Councilmember Ingram would maybe just ask that this item come back to our next work session? And then we can figure it out from there?
City, Mayor Council, I would like to make a motion that this item come back to us, to our work session for consideration.
Alright, that's a motion by Councilmember Ingram, there's a second by Councilmember here. We have discussed this, so I'll look to you for action. Alright, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous, so we'll pick this back up in August. Good job, Council. Great job. Alright, item, item 6.01, lobbyist from Kilpatrick Townsend. Mr. Manager? Ms. Angel?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Chase McDowell, our new lead lobbyist for Kilpatrick, Townsend, and Stockton. Chase, would you please come forward and bring your folks with you so you can introduce you and your firm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm Chase McDowell with Kilpatrick, Townsend, and Stockton. We're a law firm based out of Winston-Salem. We have offices in Winston-Salem, Raleigh, and Charlotte. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here and represent you all. I have a good family history with the, with the town, the City of Fayetteville. I currently live in Winston-Salem, but my grandfather left Fort Bragg to head to Europe in the 40s. From here, my father passed through churches around Cumberland County and Scotland County, Columbus County. And I grew up in Columbus County and Scotland County, so, so I have a certain affinity to the area. And even when I was at NC State, I had Mr. Dawkins, I don't know if he remembers this, come speak to a, to a group of students about healthcare policy.
Oh goodness.
That's right. So we appreciate the opportunity. We have a team of five lobbyists. The General Assembly's in session tonight, so we left some of them behind to watch over things there. And we've represented a number of municipalities from the City of Charlotte, City of Raleigh, City of Wilmington, Town of Leland, the Metro Mayor's Coalition, and the Airports Association, including a number of individual airports, and have a lot of experience in the municipal area. And we believe that we will be able to help you all advance your interest in Raleigh and work with your delegation and legislative leadership to do that.
Thank you. Glad to have you on board, something we've talked about for some time. We know a lot of changes are taking place in Raleigh, particularly coming along session, so we'll need some eyes and ears to help our delegation.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you, Council. Any questions for them? I think they were just doing an intro tonight. Alright, thank you. Yeah. Alright, alright, Council. Item 6.02. Mr. Manager, that is the Day Resource Center email. Oh, Ms. Angel Wright, I'm near again.
Good evening again. As you know, Warren Miller with Fountain Works and his staff conducted several focus groups for us over the course of the last several weeks. Warren will provide us with an update related to the results of that effort. That effort will inform how we move forward with the design of the work. Johnny Caliendo, who is the architect from IBI, is also on the call. He will speak after Warren Miller. So I will turn it over to Warren.
So good evening, Mr. Mayor, member of, members of the council. Thank you so much for having us. I would like to just take a moment to introduce my team, who's working with me, Julie Brenman, who's here, and then also Daniel Alvarez. Daniel's going to give a presentation of the Day Resource Center and what we learned from the community stakeholder focus groups and interviews and surveys. Daniel is a, pursuing his master's at University of North Carolina Chapel Hill and he is a Fayetteville native and also an officer stationed in Fort Bragg. So I'm very pleased to turn it over to Daniel to walk us through our key findings. Daniel, if we could unmute him and share the presentation.
Thank you, Warren. Can everybody hear me? Okay, I'm just going to go through the key findings and again, stay on the strict timeline. So again, looking at the community stakeholder focus groups and survey findings. One of the key to this was a quote that says, "I hope the Day Center can be a place for people and families to transition out of homelessness to a stable living experience and a place for individuals to have access to tools for long-term success." I think this is one of the key themes that we found during our, our report and findings. And again, captures some of the sentiments from the focus groups and survey. Next slide. So here, we're going to talk about the agenda, community input overview, desired field, priorities and services, and then finally, observations and tensions. We're taking any questions you may have at the end. Next slide. So the community input overview. One of the things we found was, we looked at broad-based recommendations and used interactive feature mural board to let people kind of brainstorm and come up with ideas. And then we consolidated that and looked at putting that in one report. The things that we were looking at primarily were the primary benefits, important services and features, desire to feel, both physical and the emotional. And then finally, what does success look like? And success could be after a year and then also long-term. So looking at the quote at the bottom, "The hope that the Day Center provides a collaborative and coordinated approach to assessing and connecting people to the resources. The homeless need to stabilize their lives." Again, another theme that we saw throughout the focus groups and during the survey results. Next slide. So community input overview. Background, timeline, this was conducted from May through June. The target groups were public citizens, city council, one Cumberland County Board of Commissioners interview, service providers, and then finally, community leaders. Some of the focus group highlights was, the three focus groups included many of the council members along with the Fayetteville mayor. Service providers who again gave that intimate background on what services were deemed important. And then the last two were the focus group with community youth council and general public. And then again, one interview with the Cumberland County Commissioner. One of the things we found during these focus groups was the quote to the right, there is a real need for a one-stop shop or a place where you could go and individuals could go to find those key services that aids in transitioning and long-term success, both for people coming out of disaster or a homeless situation. Survey highlights down at the bottom, again, 310 total responses, which again, we were pleased with. But more importantly, we had 38 homeless individuals that responded to that survey. Again, thanks to the help of Alex Baker, who helped distribute and then capture those, those surveys. Again, important that we were able to get input from the homeless individuals. Next slide. So looking at desired field, I think at the end of the day, probably the best way it was captured was not like a government building. So, simple, clean, modern, but also nurturing and calm and certainly professional but functional. And again, the quote to the right kind of highlights one of the things that we saw across the spectrum of results. A safe and supportive location that supports healthy social interaction. Again, these social interactions are important for, for us as humans. Also was the inclusion of gender neutral. And then again, we know that families are both in disaster situations and also homeless situations, so family-oriented. Finally was the bullet at the bottom, trauma-informed. And this was brought up by the service group providers who deemed this important to consider that the location and the physical nature of the space doesn't trigger any past responses or any past experiences that bring up negative thoughts. Many of these individuals may have, you know, those types of past. Next slide. So priority services and features. Bottom line is that the top priority was showers and laundry. And again, the quote to the right, providing services of hygiene and laundry provides the individual with dignity and confidence to take advantage of opportunities. So hygiene, showers and laundry is allows these people to go and seek out those important services with confidence. One example would be an interview. Again, something of note is these individuals want to be able to have access to that when they go and conduct these, these interviews. Next was dining services. Key here was not a full service. Dining services were important, but not providing a full service, both from, some of the reasons we'll talk about later in the PowerPoint. The final four were emergency shelter, medical. And again, the spectrum was everything from just simple, one, one-time things for individuals or more extensive care. Classroom space, of note, classroom space was adaptable and flexible. And then finally, computers and wifi, by nature of today's environment, that is needed for most people to conduct any type of administrative task. Next slide. Nice to have but not essential. At the top was kennel. Kennel was important. The argument was made that individuals coming out of disaster or in a homeless situation may have animals. And if they're not able to bring those animals to the Day Center, they may not use the services. The argument against was the logistical constraints. And again, at what level, does it include indoor or outdoor capabilities? The next two, meditation and exercise facilities or room, kind of link into the spiritual and physical component, which are important. But again, weren't deemed critical to the, to the Day Center or were nice to have but not essential. Next was library. Argument was duplication of service already provided. And then the last two, full-service dining, which we've talked about, and then childcare. The argument for childcare was individuals with family or children needed to conduct an interview may need the ability needed to conduct an interview may need the ability or the capability to have their child looked after while they are conducting necessary work or using the service provided by the center. Next slide. So finally is observations and tensions. Again, clear priority were shower and laundry linked to hygiene, not only from that confidence and dignity perspective, but also from general health. It was noted that people that are clean and able to access a shower and laundry would be less likely to get simple infections or colds or diseases. Dining services, again, full or partial. The argument for a full was the potential to serve greater needs and then also potential for training people in that sector and moving them into a job in that industry. Arguments against was a duplication of service and certainly bigger logistical constraint. Animal kennel, which we've already talked about. Next is city, county, and service providers working together, which again, deemed critical, that collaborative approach of what the Day Center functions as and what the specifics are, is important moving forward, particularly from the architect and engineering side. Duplication services, which we've already spoken about. Next is operational concerns, looking at the director. And again, what is the director's responsibilities? And what are they responsible for during that period of work? Short and long-term, it was noted during the focus groups that homelessness is not going to go away, but ideally, the Day Center is focused more on the emergency side and homeless is less of a responsibility. But again, what are the short and long-term outcomes for the Day Center? And finally, for operations concerns was funding. Staying tied to the emergency was deemed important because that is what the Day Center emergency shelter was elegant for to begin with. Next is facilitating transition, again, moving people up and out of that poverty line and providing the service that they can take advantage of. Location, proximity service provider and certainly not adding to the logistical constraint for the individuals trying to use the Day Center, both after a disaster, during disaster, or people that are moving out of homelessness, was deemed important. And then finally was design, again, looking at specific, are we tailoring this to certain needs? Or is it going to be more general where there's allowance of more flexibility and adaptability for outcomes such as our issues such as COVID-19, which we may not be able to foresee, but the center can move to support that. With that being said, we'll go to the last slide and address any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin and Ingram.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I want to thank you guys for presenting this presentation. I guess my question is to city manager and council, well, not council, but city manager and staff, what are the next steps from this presentation? In terms of, do we have an engineering, a location partnership?
Yes, ma'am. So Johnny Caliendo, the gentleman I referred to earlier, is on the phone. He took part in this, in the focus groups, I think in each one of them, to be informed as to how the things that need to go into the center, how those could fit. So he's listened to all the information. So the next step will be for Johnny to start looking for sites. And Johnny is on the phone, and he will give you information to give you more specific information. He will, I think, be here tomorrow, so he can talk about that as well, to start looking at some of the sites.
You say he's currently online?
Yeah.
He's going to speak afterwards?
Is he online? Yes, he's going to speak after you all finish your questions.
All right. Councilmember Ingram.
So I had a couple, and I'll try to sum it up. And starting with a statement, I saw in the presentation of the focus groups, and I was a little bit, I'm not going to necessarily say concerned, but were the millennial commission involved?
So I am unsure if Alex Baker was here, but I did provide the, everything that you all sent me as it relates to who you wanted. I forwarded that to staff. I know Chris Colley is here. He may be able to say. You know, but the staff should have reached out to everybody that I sent you all. We can certainly follow up. Chris, do you?
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, Chris Colley, Assistant Director, ECD. We did reach out to the millennial council because we did all of these online on Zoom. We didn't really take a roster of who came. I know, I'll speak for Alex on my team, it was critical for him to get feedback from as many folks as we could.
Okay.
So we made that effort.
Thank you. All right. So when we get down to, I noticed on page 13 of the PowerPoint, we were talking about what makes it successful. And it was, it was a little hard to follow what they were saying, what makes itself successful. Like, for instance, it says, "The number of people." What does that mean? But that's kind of a rhetorical answer. I just want to make it known that when you look at the successes, it kind of didn't make sense, and that was like the first thing gone there. My most important question is, in the responses of the surveys, when we got down to locations, all of them were pretty much surrounded by, in District 2, not near the library, not in District 2, or near the police station. And I mentioned in the work session that I made sure I wanted the locations to come back to council. And I just want to make sure I'm making that known right now again, that the locations will come back to council for us to consider before a decision is made.
Yes, ma'am. I'll take that one. And we, as Angel mentioned, the consultant will be here tomorrow to take a look at some of the locations. That's not something that we want to discuss before we've had an opportunity to brief council about that. Many of the members of council know that whenever we start naming locations, it comes with an increase in the price. And it also comes in potentially some resistance of people before council has even been able to consider one of the sites. But clearly, before we move forward on any meaningful way in identifying or narrowing down the sites, that would be something that would come clearly to council at your direction, and we would move forward from there. But we are not prepared to discuss that tonight during this open session for those reasons.
Thank you.
Yeah, and so-
Mr. Mayor and Council, if I could just respond to the question about the, what does success look like?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Julie Brenman with Fountain Works. So we asked, we asked in the focus groups and in the survey, imagine the Day Center's been up and running for a year or two years. How would you know it's been successful? And the most frequent response was by results. There's fewer homeless people in Fayetteville. More people are transitioning out of homelessness. The next most frequent response was, we would know the center's been successful by the number of people that we're serving at the center. People know about it, and they're coming to it for resources. So I just wanted to clarify that a little bit.
Thank you, ma'am. That's just the other part of Fountain Works. That's Warren's partner. Yep. All right. Thank you. Ms. Angel, you still have more presentation? That's it? All right, Council, do we have any questions? We know. Did you have someone that was-
Oh, sorry. Johnny Caliendo is on with IBI. He's the architect and the engineer. So he was going to speak to next steps.
Okay.
Johnny?
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay? So, yeah, Fountain Works has done a fantastic job of kind of capturing all the program elements the center could have and prioritizing them. So our job is going to be to kind of capture that in some kind of a program document first. And that would be kind of, that would be a sort of a dynamic working program that captures all the individual spaces that they've identified and as well as any kind of support spaces like bathrooms or mechanical spaces, grossing factors for circulation. And we'll take that and prioritize that program document and sort of flag things that might be core spaces and expendable spaces, future, possibly future spaces. And that will give us a picture of what the building size would need to be within a range, and then also what some of the site spaces would look like. So we would ultimately kind of have a gross square footage of building area and then an acreage of site development requirements. And all that's going to end up being kind of a range of square footage and acreage.
My last solid.
And, beg your pardon?
No, sorry. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. And once, I think we need that to kind of test fit that both the budget and the site and possibly existing building constraints. And I think we would, I would expect we might do a few, two to three rounds of filtering and analyzing the sites with different criteria. Like a first pass might be kind of a upset criteria, so to speak. Like if there's any sites that just would be precluded for a number of different reasons. One could be, you know, we have a core program and it calls for a site area of one and a half acres and one of the sites is 0.8 acres. And so we wouldn't, we would just sort of exclude that site. There also might be other factors like remediation requirements. Possibly there's some indication that there might be some unsuitable soils or contamination in the site. Possibly acquisition costs or access, easement restrictions, just kind of anything that might affect the development or the cost of the project.
Got you, sir. We did have, well, one or two other questions because we're coming up on a hard deadline.
Oh, sorry about that.
No problem. What kind of timeframe are you talking before it moves to, let's say, the next step that you just described?
I think we're starting, we've already started, but I would expect that we would look at, our process would be six to eight weeks. You know, sometime possibly middle of August.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Waddell?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Johnny, what I think I'm understanding you to be saying is that the facility is built based upon the programming needs. And so with that being the indicator, is Fountain Works presently working with some of the nonprofits in the area who we would potentially consider as partners in this endeavor to build that programming? Or is this something that you are doing independent of them? And then we'll just kind of shop to those, those different potential partners?
Probably a little bit of both. I think they did, there was some engagement with some of the local nonprofits. And we would, we would need some, we just need some kind of a basis to test fit it. And I think that's why I mentioned it, probably like a working or dynamic program. And that elements of it, I think, would be core, like the sheltering kind of multipurpose room for bathrooms and things like that. I think some things might be, would evolve as the partners were identified. For example, administrative, operational needs for the space. But I think we would keep, we would try to have some elements of administrative offices or operational offices and components that would support that in the program.
Thank you. So I guess what I'm getting at is, I know one of the biggest concerns that we've had during this dialogue was, who does what? And so we have been advised consistently that in order to create a program that really has the buy-in of the partners, the partners need to be at the table. And so I would certainly encourage, while I do understand that it would probably be difficult to get everybody to agree on one model, I certainly want to really strongly urge that Fountain Works will work with the various, particularly those who are in this space in our community presently, to see how we may be able to work with them to create this program. Because what we don't want is to create something that they won't, that they won't have a buy-in as partners for. We want them to feel like this is as much their project as it is the city of Fayetteville's project. And so I'm strongly urging that you would consider, or your organization would consider, making sure that they're at the table as we develop this programming so that we can make sure we get the right building, for the right partners, for the right people at the right time.
Understood.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Wright?
I heard early in the presentation that really piqued my interest is that these people that's going to be coming through this Day Center, the Day Center goal is to make those people that are struggling out there, maybe homeless or whatever, to become productive parts of society once again. Is that your key role in the Day Center? Because of the back and forth that we've heard in the community, they did not want a Day Center. They said that a shelter was needed mostly because of adverse weather. Give us a little bit more insight as to what you guys are doing and what is the goal of this Day Center? Is how we're going to put these people to work and how can we make them productive again?
So what we envision and what our community partners have helped us kind of build an idea of is a place where work gets done. So people are going in there, and I love working for the city manager. He sounds like a shelter director sometimes. He knows a lot about this stuff.
He is.
But, you know, one of those barriers that sometimes people suffering from homelessness experiences, they don't have a birth certificate, they don't have a driver's license, they don't have a mailing address. So these are things that can happen at a resource center. Not only that, but then connecting them with case management services that will hopefully put them in long-term housing solutions. Whether that be, they just need first and last month of security deposit to get somewhere and be stable, or if they need permanent supportive housing on the back end. But that is really the idea here, is that this is a place where you go in, you get services, and you leave, and hopefully you're better off at the end of that journey.
So it's not a welfare system where, you know, we're just giving, 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 but we're creating something to give back to our community in the long run? So it's not another welfare system that some have stated?
No, not at all. This isn't a place where folks will be sleeping overnight on a regular basis. This isn't a place where people will just be able to hang out all day long. This is a place where services will be offered.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Warren. Good to see you again. I think we, oh, it's Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. You good? Okay. All right. So we look forward to something great from you guys. We'll see you at the next stage of this. Thank you. Yeah, okay. All right. Council, item 6.03, discussion of City Hall renovations, CARES Act funding. Ms. Angel?
Yes, sir. Hello again.
The manager's working you tonight.
Yes, sir. I'm here to provide some background on the first floor renovation. So for several years, the city contemplated a renovation for the first floor to make the area more customer service friendly. It also would have improved the workflow and efficiency, as well as the safety of the first floor. I'm told, since I've only been here a year, that the original plan was to finance the renovations as part of the city CIP after the third floor was completed. But for various reasons, the plans were placed on hold. So the current layout of the first floor will simply not meet our needs going forward. Renovating the first, so renovating the first floor would allow us to increase the ability to practice social distancing. It will also allow staff to implement mitigation efforts for staff and citizens associated with COVID-19. The renovations would essentially take permitting and inspections, finance, and code enforcement personnel from the back of the building at the rear to the front of the building. Doing this would limit exposure and increase safety for our visitors and staff. We also discussed these renovations back when there was, the Virginia Beach shooting occurred. So we've been talking about this for quite some time. Staff is proposing to use the $900,000 that we received from the county that was provided via a grant that came down from the federal government via the CARES Act to get this started. Staff is asking council to commit to doing this project. And mind you, the $900,000 will simply get us started. When I walked in tonight, the entire, I got a note that said the entire front lobby would cost an estimate of 2.6 million. That's, those are two-year-old numbers. And then the entire first floor would cost an estimated 6 million. And of course, we would come back with firmer numbers after we engaged an architect or an engineer. So wanted to kind of set that up. Jay Tolan is going to come forward with a little bit more information. But did you all have any questions for me?
I did, Ms. Angel. So I remember this discussion several years ago that council decided to renovate a floor at a time, and then we stopped because we didn't know the future of City Hall. And so what I understood this proposal to be was that there was CARES Act funding that we could use toward making our current- toward making our current situation, uh, more COVID-prepared.
Yes, sir.
So whether there's sneeze shields or, or, you know, touchless doors or whatever the, the case is, um, that was my understanding. Now, it sounds to me as if you're looking at a full-scale two-point-six-million-dollar renovation to wrap up in the COVID preparations. Is that what you're saying?
Um, yes, so we can take it from gradations. So the beginning would be using the nine hundred thousand and doing what we can without. Then the two-point-six would, as, as I said, it was a two-year-old estimate to do just the front. And then the full-scale revitalization of the whole first floor would be an estimated six million.
So I just want council to know the history of that, that, that the previous councils hesitated because we had had some interest in whether we would relocate or continue to, to put more investment here. You know, I'm all about COVID-friendly, particularly if the government, state and federal are paying for it, but, um, the additional two-million-dollar ask, which is an old number, which is probably more than that by now, um, is, uh, is, is quite a bit to talk about, so. I guess, um, you'll have Jay come and then we'll have a couple of questions and we'll... Mr. Manager, you looking for some decision tonight? Are you just briefing us or what?
Um, yes, sir. Um, the, as, as Angel mentioned, um, this has been a project that, um, in various, uh, forms has, um, been on the city council's radar for some time, whether or not it was just about security, physical security, or now it's about customer service, um, or even if it's about, um, um, COVID, um, one, COVID two, COVID three, um, restrictions and things of that nature. Um, the proposal though is that unless we are committed to, um, spending the money that Jay's gonna talk about in just a moment, as well as possibly finding additional funds to round out at least the lobby, um, council may wish to do something different with that money. And so what we're really asking before we proceed is to get council's concurrence that this is a project that is worthy to do, and the time is now for us to do it with the limited resources that we do have, and that being namely the nine hundred thousand dollars.
And there, there is an official action to act on the budget to, to allocate the nine hundred thousand, so that would be an official ask tonight.
Okay, alright, uh, did have a couple of questions. Councilmember here and then Banks McGlaughlin.
This, this, um, question is gonna go to the city manager. I'm, I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but the additional two-point-five million, I think that's what was just stated. Or, Mr. Tolan, where are we expecting to get that funding from?
So the plan would be to finance it and then so we would allocate the nine hundred thousand dollars tonight, start the project, and then look to finance the remaining, depending on whether the council's pleasure was to do the first floor lobby or do the entire, um, first floor. And then so if we were to finance it, the, um, we would bring that plan back to you for approval and then the first debt payment would be fiscal year-end twenty twenty-two. So not the budget that you're gonna, um, discussing now, but next year's budget will be the first debt payment. But we would need commitment from the council because we would start spending that money in advance of, um, that debt payment.
Now, when you say finance it, are you speaking of the city getting a loan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Alright, uh, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, just to be clear, um, because after reading all of this, I didn't recall seeing anything for the two-point-five million. Now, the nine hundred thousand dollars, that's to go towards, um, social distance, helping our first floor as far as customer service, like with risk, um, mitigations and things of that nature?
That's correct.
And then you guys are wanting to request additional two-point-five just for renovation?
Right, and so then we would, we would start the process with the nine hundred thousand and then bring back to council if, if that was council's pleasure, the plans to finance it and when those payments would be.
And so again, the nine hundred thousand dollars, that's just solely going towards, um, with, as far as making sure everyone's safe when they're coming in as far as the COVID.
As much as we could do, yes, ma'am. So we would, um, be looking to, um, uh, draw up, um, take the plans that we have and turn those into, um, um, a gray, uh, phase. So what could we do reasonably for the nine hundred thousand dollars would be the first phase? Some of that could be furniture, fixtures, but some of it could be light construction and demolition as well.
Okay, and what are you, what are you guys requesting today? Is it gonna be two separate votes or just one?
We need an official vote on the budget for the nine hundred thousand and then to allocate that to the capital project ordinance, which would get the process, process, process started. And then we would like direction on whether we explore the options of getting future financing to complete the entire project.
Cause council, I'm for the nine hundred thousand dollars, but right now as far as the COVID going on and so much going on, I don't feel comfortable requesting, um, additional two-point-five million.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Um, Councilmember Wright and then Mayor Pro Tim.
Yeah, my question is, you know, we've been talking about renovation of this building for several years. Um, at this point, we're talking about additional, uh, two-point-five on the top of nine hundred. Um, but we were, we had some discussion a while back whether we're gonna actually even be in this building or sell this building and relocate. Has that discussion died as far as staff is concerned, as far as this building being a building that we could utilize going into the future? And it, it will suffice? We were talking parking, we were, we were dealing with a lot of issues when it came to this building, so has that changed or there's another design?
Yes, sir.
Cause two-point, two-point-five million is a lot of money to put into a building and what we're talking about, uh, not being able to utilize.
Yes, sir. Um, as, uh, members of council who were here, uh, we were, um, very bullish on, on the, um, future of downtown where we were looking at the stadium and the surrounding investments that were, were coming out of the ground. And that very well could be the case still. Um, that's why we are first starting to ask you just to utilize the nine hundred thousand dollars for those improvements which we can make while we explore, um, what we could do with two and a half or more million dollars and give the council opportu- opportunity to reflect on that. Um, as it relates to, um, selling this building and possibly relocating, um, some of you councilmembers may also remember as well that it was advised that if there were someone who came in and wanted to redevelop this site, in all likelihood, they would be asking the city to, um, sell the building at a discount and, um, uh, because, for the development opportunities that that would generate or annure. And, um, and so it's not like someone would come in and offer you thirty million dollars for this building, but then you could take and build another building somewhere else for probably sixty, seventy, or eighty million, which would be potentially the cost of a new city hall for a city our size. And so, um, long-term looking at it and more than happy to run those numbers because I think as Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin mentioned, uh, there's still a lot of uncertainty around COVID and about revenues long-term. Um, and that's why we're, um, hoping to do a phased approach here and use the nine hundred thousand dollars first and come back with reasonable plans as well as a funding source, we hope, um, for the other improvements. But even if we were to, um, take the, um, um, old estimates of two and a half million or six million dollars, um, and then put another six million dollars for the second floor, because we've done the third floor, we're proposing to do portion of the first floor, but let's say we did all of the first floor, then we still have to go back and do the second floor as well. So let's say that that was an additional, uh, ten, fifteen million dollars for all of it, the first and second floor combined. You'd be very hard-pressed to build a, a city hall half the size of this anywhere else in this city for less than twenty, twenty-five, thirty million dollars. We, we looked at this and looking at the price of other cities in the state when they built city halls, um, replacement city halls in particular, um, they range well in excess of twenty, thirty, forty million dollars.
So what you're saying that, you, you know, so, so you're saying that, um, you know, the idea is off the table as far as to sell this building?
No, sir. We, um, um, I think that, um, the council, um, um, would probably entertain any offers that people would like to make. Um, but in all actuality, how those deals typically work, you don't have someone that comes in and offer you the cash equivalency of the building because even the cash equivalency of this building would not allow you to replace this building somewhere else if you had to build it new.
Thank you.
But tonight what we're asking for is to allocate the nine hundred thousand dollars and authorize us to use it for this project in a limited fashion for nine hundred thousand.
Alright, so Mayor Pro Tim?
Um, thank you, Mr. Manager. I guess the point that I wanted to make and it might become with a question. Um, we have talked about renovating the first floor for quite a while. Um, I do agree with Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin that we do need to do the nine hu- nine hundred thousand dollars for the COVID. Um, I guess the question that I have to ask is because of COVID, you know, things were going well in, um, in the business and real estate and things like that. So I just don't even know if it would be feasible, the way COVID is right now, that somebody would even be looking at our building. We hope that they would. But again, I've been on council for seven years. We've talked about redoing the way we do business for our customers when we walk in. And we haven't done anything on the first floor, but we, if you're a business owner, you have to revamp how you do business, you know, every five to ten years. So, um, I know it's hard to swallow, but I think that we should go ahead and let it happen. Um, that, do the nine hundred thousand dollars, let staff come back to us because there are a lot of things that need to be updated in our city hall. And the only reason I can say that, I know what a difference it made when we did the third floor and how we seem to move business a lot further and a lot faster. Um, so I, I, I don't like the fact that it's that much money, but it is what it is and we need to move ahead. Thank you.
Alright, so council, we're opposed with the, with the decision. I think I'll, you know, I'll say this. What I wanna know, uh, Mr. Manager, is the nine hundred thousand dollars that we received out of the CARES Act was the second, uh, distribution that, that they gave to counties to distribute to cities. Is that right?
Um, it was my understanding that it was the first, that a hundred and fifty was, uh, distributed from the state to ninety-seven counties and then there was a hundred and fifty million in reserve.
Okay, but this is the one that came through the county, cause we did receive some direct funding to the transit into the airport.
Right, this money here came from the state to the county and then the county asked us for an application.
What were the restrictions for this money? Did it, did it give any kind of, uh, restrictions as to what it could or could not be used for?
Uh, COVID nineteen response and it could not be used for revenue replacement.
So COVID nineteen response, so as we're looking at wrapping this up, Mr. Manager, would you, I don't wanna, I don't wanna tie the two things together. So you are able to use the nine hundred thousand dollars and make the first floor COVID-ready or to utilize the money within the boundaries, correct?
Mm-hmm.
But you're also, as the second part to that, wanna use this as an opportunity to renovate City Hall?
Correct.
Okay, because I know it's part of the discussion the last time council was that, um, if, the problem was that we were told by a couple of the urban planners that we're sitting on beachfront property. And so it's not paying taxes, uh, it's being used, but this, this function could be used at another location that's not in prime real estate. So as you invest that in there, you, you just gotta look at, you know, long-term, if you ever see this money again and will you have enough useful life to get it back over time with, you know, the functionality? I understand that you can do things to it that, uh, make it easier to operate. But if, if, with the way things are and if the economy comes back and you're sitting in an opportunity zone and you've been deemed prime real estate beachfront property, then you put another three million dollars that you may never see again in there right now. And, Mr. Manager, what I, um, if I understand correct, uh, Mr. Tolan, when you sign a contract for construction, you have to have the money identified, right? So you can't sign a three-million-dollar contract with only nine hundred thousand dollars identified, right?
That's correct. That's why we were asking for direction and then we would come back with.
So council, this is a process that would basically, what does it do? Uh, it, it sets aside or, or puts the authorization?
I think we would come back to council one more time before it was actually authorized. This would be the direction to really get everything in a formal package to present for the formal vote.
To move forward in, in that scenario.
Y- yes, to move forward in this scenario, correct. But it, it would not commit you to borrowing money at this stage.
You had to identify from some other source then, right?
No, no, I mean, this specific action would not legally commit you. We would bring that action that would legally commit the city in another.
Just verbally commit you, but you'd have to bring back another vote to legally commit.
That's exactly right.
Okay, alright. Alright, uh, Councilman here.
Yes, but if I'm understanding correctly, Mayor, we can move forward with the nine hundred thousand?
Yeah, that's, that's money that we have from the state.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm good, yeah.
Okay, alright. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see. Um, Councilman Dawkins?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I was prepared to make a motion.
Yes.
If you're ready.
Alright, uh, Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanna very briefly say that when we were, the previous council was talking about renovating City Hall, I was one of the people who was very opposed to it for the reasons that we've stated this evening. But I do wanna say, and I'll use the analogy that, that the mayor has put on the table about beachfront property. The beach is closed right now. And it'll, it'll, it'll potentially be closed for some time. And one of the things that we still have a responsibility to, and I say this under the caveat that I was one, probably one of the most opposing city manager you probably remember to putting any more money into a building that we would potentially sell. But understanding what the city manager is saying about the cost of building a new building, we can't afford that right now, even if we wanted to. Um, and then additionally, the, 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 the aspect of being able to keep our city rolling in the event that things don't turn around very quickly. And we are being cautioned right now that they may not. And so I will say, um, I am, I am not opposed to the investment to make our building more easily accessible during these different restrictions that we have in place as, as a result of the coronavirus. And I think that in order to protect our employees, in order to protect our citizen base, and in order to keep the process moving clearly, we may all want to consider this. And I'll take us really quickly to the next meeting where we'll be talking about budget. These, these are some of the things that, to me, this takes prioritization over some of the other items that we were talking about when it comes to our fund balance. And this is why you guys started getting those emails from me saying, hey, we may need to pull back because there are gonna be things like this that will come up that we will need to address and we're already looking at lost revenues. So we have to be very specific and strategic about what we decide to take on. But I can be supportive of this, um, because it is, it is again for the safety and security of our community, our staff, and to keep the city rolling and working.
Thank you. Well, I will say this, if the, if the beach is closed permanently, we got a forty-million-dollar problem across the street, so, uh, okay. Council, Councilman Dawkins?
Uh, Ms. Mayor?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let me get Councilmember Ingram. I know what you were headed to.
Um, City Attorney, are we actively finding, um, searching for funding that will allow us to assist with coronavirus-related renovations for City Hall? Outside of pulling loans, are we actively?
City Manager?
What did I say?
City Attorney.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was wondering why she was looking around, but City Manager.
Um, let's let Karen try.
Okay.
Um, y- y- yes, ma'am, um, we are, um, actively, um, pursuing any and all. I think that, um, the work that we, um, council authorized with the hiring of the, um, state lobbyists who were here earlier. Part of what the mayor mentioned was that the, um, funding that came down from the federal government, um, came to the state and, um, then the state allocated that to the counties versus going to the municipalities. And one of the things that we are gonna be asking our state lobbyists to look at is whether it's an opportunity for that money when it comes to the state, instead of the state sending it to the, the counties, sending it directly to the larger municipalities. The issue we talked about just a moment ago, the day reporting center, as you'll recall, that got sent to the county and it took us two and a half years to work with the county to get that shit turned over to a city project. And we feel the same is the case if there's billions of dollars that the federal government is gonna be sending to the state. We know how to spend it, uh, we, and, um, if you gotta work through the county.
Imagine I got my, uh, upside-down thing.
What was that, sir?
It's, this means it's time.
I can't see you over there with that, I'm sorry. Could you hold it up?
Yes, sir. Alright, uh, Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please the council make a motion to approve, uh, the allocation of nine hundred thousand from the CARES Act funding provided from the County of Cumberland for making, uh, the first floor, uh, uh, Wuhan Corona COVID, uh, ready.
Alright, so there's a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, there's a, a second by Councilmember Wright. Any, well, we've discussed this. Alright, council, I'll look to you for your votes.
Can't forget the Chinese.
Alright, uh, motion carries. The unanimous, Madam Clerk. Oh, boy. Alright, so council, we are, uh, alright, two, two requests before you, council. I'll be very, very brief, um, and then, uh, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Wright. Um, police cons- please consideration. Where is? So, uh, Madam Clerk, we put both of these on one, uh, request, was it? A separate? Well, mine, mine only shows one.
Yeah, it's blank on the granite.
Alright, I'll, I'll be quick, council. Um, one was I had, had a very- All right, I'll, I'll be quick, council. Um, one was I had, had a very, you know, first of all, let me say I commend our, our police department, our chief. It was very informative. Um, I, I, although I've been on council, I didn't have that level of detailed discussion, uh, that we had, and I'm sure all of you took place or participated in on Friday and Saturday. Councilmember Dawkins and myself, uh, finished it up between yesterday and today. Um, and in no way, only, only thing I'm proposing to council as we, as we consider this, uh, the first thing is uh, the five percent, uh, floor for community, uh, and police, community policing, community uh, enhancement, twenty-first century policing. Our, our police department has been doing uh, an outstanding job over the last several years trying to, uh, enhance the relationships with the police. And we, and we appreciate that. We've had, since I've been, had, had opportunity to be on council, we had two great chiefs, had Chief Medlock and had, have now Chief Hawkins. Um, and so the culture at, at city police department, I think is better than I've seen, uh, by being a, a longtime resident. However, in lieu of today's, uh, environment, I know that national discussions are not applicable to, to everything here. But just as we look to have a, an, another successful ten years, um, I was asking that not defund, but put some guidance to utilizing or encourage the police department to utilize a minimum of five percent of their annual budget toward proactive police, policing. And some of the examples that, uh, I emailed over the weekend were some of the, uh, the recommendations that came out of the task force, a lot of which we're doing. But it, it, it comes with things like building, uh, community programs and relationships in neighborhoods that have, um, typically high, high crime rates, so that they get to know these children, to interact in our schools. They're doing a number of these things. It's just not quantified or listed as, as what we talked about today. If you looked in your budget on, on page F thirty-two and F thirty-six, as it talked about performance measures, uh, the chief even admitted that some of these performance measures were, were kind of outdated. And so with doing this, what I'm asking council, just as we have a city policy to say that we're, we won't allow our fund balance to get below ten percent. Uh, that's a council policy. The state has a law, but there's a council policy. I think that when you're making real systematic change, I, I, I believe that, uh, one is we need to get them to quantify the great things that they're doing, whatever they categorize, community policing. That should be a matrix as to how successful they are every year. Should be included in this binder and updated. And two, if there's a line item that, that says that, that we've spent, uh, two hundred thousand dollars or four hundred thousand dollars in, you know, uh, community programs, um, related to, you know, community enhancement, whatever. If it's a line item, I think is great. And that will, um, have a longer shelf life than, than us. It'll have a longer shelf life than Chief Hawkins. And it'll be a real systemic change. So that was the first consideration that I had. I may, we, I know we may not have all of the answers to it, but at least the premise of getting them to quantify the great work that they're doing and to put some guard, guardrails in there for future, uh, police chiefs and councils was a consideration for the first item. So, uh, Councilwoman Ingram?
Yes, um, I, City Manager might can answer, or Chief Hawkins might can answer. And then Mayor, my second point of the question is gonna be for you. Um, can we confirm that we already kind of meet the, the percentage minimum that the mayor is, is requesting?
Good evening, council.
Good to see you.
Good to see you guys again. Um, thank you for asking that. Great question. So, um, as the mayor mentioned, I provided, um, and I don't know how to show this on the, I guess, the map, because this, well, this wasn't provided. Oh, thank you. So as we talk about, um, thank you, Madam, as we talk about the city's, the police department's budget, if you'll see this chart, eighty-two percent of our actual budget goes to personnel, the workforce, basically. And basically, the workforce does the work as far as engagement connecting, connecting. What I, what I know what we do as far as trying to figure out, can we do better quantifying that, which is whether it be a timekeeping, keeping mechanism, we have a calendar that we enter all of the events that we go to. Definitely, we for sure can show how we can, um, quantify. We have, let's say we have twenty people at an event for five hours. We can get that calculation for next year. But we definitely, I, I can easily say minimally, right now, we probably spend between thirty to forty percent of our time doing community policing initiatives minimally.
Thank you. So Mayor Colvin, just so I make sure I'm understanding your request, though we already meet your minimum, what you're wanting to do is just simply say it does not fall below that.
Yes, ma'am. So, so the number that I used, I, I didn't want to be overly aggressive when I put in the request. So I used a real minimum number because I didn't really understand without council allowing staff to look at it, what the negative impacts may have been on their budget. So I didn't name a high number, but I knew once I talked to her that they were doing a number of things that they're just not getting credit for. Like, y- you are doing the work, but you have to tell the story. And so what I want to say is that days after Chief Hawkins, after this council, after a manager, that as a systemic change, that we can just say that there's a floor of some type, just to make sure that, that we're, we're staying proactive in it.
I believe we can definitely, um, c- create the matrix to be able to say how much of the budget, which is the workforce time, is allocated to our engagement and our, in our involvement. We just got to figure out the method to do that, but I, I know we can do that for next year.
I just wanted to clarify that, because I just don't feel comfortable me not being a law, law enforcement official telling you what to do with your money and your staff and personnel. So I just wanted to, I know what you do in the community and this council knows what you do. And I think it's our jobs to educate the citizens on what you do. You have a lot that you do. And like, as Mayor, Mayor mentioned, you getting that credit. And so people don't know that you do about thirty to thirty, uh, percent of community efforts. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that. And what the mayor was asking was not to defund the police.
Oh, no, no. Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Kinston?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, one of the things that I did want to mention is in doing the research based on, um, Mayor's, um, resolution, I did notice that the, um, eightcan'twait.org, the Fayetteville was not listed. And I think for the amount of work that the Fayetteville Police does, that we need to be recognized, um, in there. I'm not sure what the qualifications are for us to get listed when you put our.
That's the next part of this conversation.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I'll wait then.
Well, well, let me respond to that. One, because it's so new, you know, I was first asked about this maybe a week and a half ago. I had no idea. And I myself like to do research as far as who created it, how did they gauge, and who, who is qualifying the entities that are in that or, that listing. It's not like it's our neighbors', um, federal guidelines of submission. It's not like they use the force, national task, task force database that we submit. So I do want to do the research of saying, what is this entity that we're submitting? Because it's not, um, it's not anything governmental entity. I want to do research before we say, we'll give you our data, even though our data is open to the public. But I definitely want to, um, look at that. Because it's, it's, we, we easily can say, we're doing way, way more than just eight. That's not our standard. Our standard is way more uh, a, another threshold than just this minimum. We, we reach way past that.
Okay. Sorry, Mayor, jumped the gun on that one. I was ready to get out there. Thank you.
So council, as we, as we, as we move past of this, I guess the ask is, oh, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, ma'am. Your lights are not pressed. Okay, I got you. All right, Council, Councilwoman, uh, Waddell?
Thank you, sir. So I was going to, and, and this may be where you're going, so excuse me if it is, but I was going to say that it, I, I would like to see, because when we sat down, you had a list. You gave us a list of the, the quantifiable things that the Fayetteville Police Department is doing in our community. I would love to ask the council to give you time to be able to go back and put a dollar amount with each of those things, so that we can see annually what the dollar amount to each of those things are, so that we can then in turn articulate to, to the citizenry what percentage by your estimation from these, this programming that is actually on the books is being taken from the police budget. Um,
I take it from it? Oh, oh, you're telling me, okay. It's within it. So I know it's a lot of.
Right, right. From within that budget. Um, also, I want to, um, I want to go on record as saying that what we've learned, y'all, I want to, I'm trying to hear that. What we've learned, uh, over the last few days about our, our police force and that some of us have kind of been, when we're out in the community, we see y'all everywhere. And so, um, it is, I want to just go on record as saying that I believe that we should hold up our police force as a model to other forces in this city to say, here's how you do it. And so, um, if we can get that information and we can get on board with really pushing that information out, here's how you do it. Here's how you get in the community and you become a part of your community. Here's how your officers can identify a person. Even, you know, they, they don't have to, it doesn't have to be trouble before the officers come out. And so, um, I just want us to really, as we're talking about this, I, I know people have been yelling a lot at us about what they think we should be doing. And I think a lot of that is based upon emotion and is based upon the fact that we've not been very informative. And that's our bad. That's, that's on us. And, um, I think it's time for us to really educate our citizenry base, because we need to eradicate the emotional responses. We need to give them factual information. And we need to let them know that they've got an excellent force. Room for improvement always. Nobody's perfect.
Always.
But that they've got an excellent force and that we are called upon often by other municipalities to say, hey, how are y'all doing this? So I want to, um, I just wanted to kind of put that out there.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Definitely will take.
Before I go to Councilmember here, I know I'm way past and we've got these lawyers here who are very expensive by the hour. But, um, council, eh, any council member request is just, uh, a nod to, to get more information. Chief has a wealth of, of statistics that she showed us that she didn't even know she had. She told her computer whiz to pull it up and she pulled up all type of graphs. I think that will be helpful to us. Um, and then we can, you know, as we have goals as a council, like, I think we're the greatest city in, in America, but we still have goals
Absolutely.
about striving to where we want to be. So I would, uh, if, in being inclined, my ask as, um, Councilwoman Waddell and Kinston alluded to before I could get there was just basically, is to see if you could bring us back that information.
Absolutely.
We could see how it is and where we are. I would like to update our matrix at some point to say what success looks like.
Okay.
Okay, and then, uh, we could talk about it at, at some point, but.
Absolutely. You know, that'll have to be for next year.
I got you. All right.
We will definitely take the time, want to get what we've done in the past and take some effort for that. But that'll also help us, like you said, get the guidance from July one, how are we going to measure this up and how are we going to calculate it? It's very easy to figure that.
I know we've got about an eighteen percent minority, uh, police department. I'll ask about that like we did fire a few years ago, but, uh, council, if that's okay, uh, if she can bring that back when she has an opportunity. Chief, thank you. I know you're busy and.
Thank you, yes.
Appreciate your time. Um, last thing, guys, was the, um, eight can't wait, as the chief talked about, we talked about that pretty intensely. Um, we are doing, it said that, that on average, most cities were doing three to, three to five of the eight recommendations. Uh, it is, it is pretty factual that, that, that these eight things will reduce, um, decrease, uh, actual police violence by, by some percentage. I, I won't debate what. It said seventy, but you know, we can, we can give or take a percentage, but any reduction in that is necessary. The two, uh, we were doing six or are doing six of the practices. Chief explained to me the two, uh, and that list that you alluded to, Councilmember Kinston. I want to see our city on there too, because we're, we're, we're shining above a lot of those places. But they get there by, by the council, the governing body adopting a, a, um, a commitment to, to move into, into, into this area that, that, that says that your, your community, your police department will uh, take up or look at these standards. Uh, Charlotte did it this evening, or yesterday, Raleigh did it, other communities are adding to it. But the two that we talked about in depth when I met with her, the chokeholds and strangleholds, she said that they are banned, but it allows them to be used under certain circumstances. Um, but I don't know if the policy gives the specifics like that, but that's how it was explained. So I do understand if it's a life death situation, that, that, that may be all you have. But, and the other thing was, uh, warnings before shootings. And when she explained that as a professional, she basically said that their, their process is that they give a number of, of steps before, uh, firing. And so I think that that, um, is wrapped up in the exhaust alternatives. Um, but, you know, it was, it was a lot of misinformation out to say that you had to do a warning shot. That was not what the eight, eight can't wait, um, recommendations were. Didn't say anything about a warning shot. It just said that you would do all steps before you, the utilization of daily force. So what I want to ask, because I don't, uh, hold myself out to be a law enforcement professional, but a- as this council member requests, to see what it is that we could do that possibly did not compromise our officer's safety, but made sure that there was some guidance. Again, we've got a good chief, we've got a good department. But long after we're gone, if there's nothing in writing, then pretty much it, 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 it doesn't stick. So I know that they have some of these things, but in light of today's environment, I think it, it, it is, uh, incumbent upon us to make sure that we have checked everything in our system. And I know some of these committees, in fact, what I would do is to defer this if it's of interest. As we set up those committees, we'll talk about that. In turn, externally, this could be something that the committees looked into and got it back to council, because you would have the opportunity to drill down into it versus this. So I wanted to raise this issue tonight, let them know that we are striving for greatness in a number of areas, but to see if you would agree with allowing the committee this to be one of the items that they talk to the staff about. So have a couple lights. Uh, I don't know who was first, but I'll start left to right. I'll go with Councilmember Ingram, then here, Kinston and Waddell.
Uh, real quick, Mayor, um, I, I think your question is like, well, what could we do? One of the things that came out of our weekend session of learning about the policies and internally, um, what came out of my group for the most is, um, eight and more. Is that we do more. And I think if we do anything, we have, um, and you correct me if I'm wrong, guys, noble and a, a key, uh, Kalia? Is that right? Noble and Kalia? We have certain standards that a lot of other municipalities do not even have in accreditations that say we are doing the best practices as of right now. And so if, if I were to say anything, I, I would say we could start our own campaign and set ourselves aside to say, we do a little bit more. And this is Fayetteville. We like to do things a little bit differently. We like to, I think, do it a little bit better. And I, I would feel a little bit more comfortable with doing that instead of compromising what our officers are already doing. Um, and I, I was even asked by a, by a, a resident, and I said, we do more than eight. We do, we go beyond that. And they questioned, well, I would question if, if they actually prac- practice the policy of it or something like that. And I said, that's a great question. But I, I would like to see us set ourselves aside to say, you know what, we do more than that. Um, and I know Chief is really good at coming up with campaigns, so I, 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 I would, that's what I would like to see.
So if I understand you right, just because the request is that I asked us to, to look at the adoption of the eight, but if there are some on-the-job, uh, caveats that, that we can't see as not being law enforcement professionals, um, that maybe the committee can, can uphold it. But I understand, if, if what I'm saying, you, hearing you saying that it would, it would not only be eight, but eight plus is what you're saying. Okay, all right. Thank you. Councilman here.
And I agree, Mayor, with those statements. I, we had our meeting on Friday. And, uh, I, I affirm the, the eight can't wait, but we also sort of go a little bit higher, a little bit more in depth. And I was very, very, um, happy to hear that. I also appreciate that the members that were there, we had an opportunity, opportunity to have a one-on-one raw conversation with our chief of police. We asked her whatever we wanted to ask her, and she didn't back up and she gave us some real, real good information. So I do salute our, uh, police chief. I do salute our, uh, police staff. But there's always room for improvement. And what I'm happy is that not only, uh, all of us around the diocese, we are open to improve, along with our senior staff and our police de- uh, chief and police department are also uh, open to improve. So I welcome that information back that you are requesting, sir.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kinston?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I echo, um, the two previous council members that the eight and more um, is something that we're already doing, that I look forward to working on the committee with it, just as, um, just working and going back in and looking at the duty to intervene. There's always that expectations of making sure that we get out there and that we are leading, um, this effort. Again, um, I would be glad to work on this committee. And thank you.
Already. Yeah, thank you. And I'll, I'll send that to you, council, um, at, at, at the conclusion of this, uh, the recommendations I had. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm, I'm going to sound just a little different, because I, I do want to, I, I echo much of the sentiment of my, my fellow peers. but I do want to highlight that there are two. I don't want anybody in the community to think that we're glossing over the fact that there are two of these eight can't wait that we've not adopted. And I want to be very forthcoming in saying that we likely will not adopt them. And I don't want people to feel like, um, we're selling them a dream by saying eight and more, because you, there's two of these you probably won't get. I don't think that, after, based upon what I heard from this council as we went through this training over the weekend, I don't think that there, and y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that there are any members of this council that walked away from that training saying, we have to require a warning shot, be fired.
That, that wasn't what, one of the criteria was. It was, it was require a warning, not a warning shot. And see, and that, that kind of got lost in.
If you look at the verbiage, a warning shot is on there. And so that's one of the things. And then also, and, and also I want to clarify, because it's, it's on there. Also, I want to clarify that, um, one of the, one of the.
Well, let me, let me say this, since this was my request. The, the eight that I have did not include that.
No, I understand, but I'm, and, and here's my other delineation. I think that, as, just as we did with the yellow movement, when we said that we needed to differentiate between the movement and the information, I think that we need to employ that tactic here as well. Because I think when you talk about the eight can't wait, it's a part of a national movement. It's not just about the, it's, it's not about what we're saying we do and we don't do. It's a part of a movement and that movement, the ultimate goal of that movement is defunding the police. And we've all identified, so when you go and you look at their website, because that's what I spent time doing today. I want to familiarize myself, what's behind these movements? And when you go and you familiarize yourself with that, unless we are prepared to go down that road, we need to change the verbiage. And I agree with Councilmember, um, Ingram when she says, let's do our own thing. Let's, let's bring in, we have a lot of, there's a lot of individuals in this community who have expressed a genuine interest in being able to understand the policies that our police department has in place. Let's create some opportunities for that dialogue. Let's invite them to be a part of looking through these processes and understanding how the police department goes a- and, and, and employs their tactics and how they do their training. Let's get them to the table with us, because instead of just saying, we'll do it or we won't, let's, let's make sure that they understand why. So I don't want to mislead anybody into thinking that I'm prepared to adopt, um, like eight can't wait plus more, because I, we have to, we have to delineate between that movement to defund the police and what we are actually saying, which is we've got great policies in place, but we acknowledge that there's room for improvement where our policies are concerned. And so I hope that we'll just, um, as we move forward, that we will consider, um, as, as closely as we did the verbiage for the yellow movement, that we'll consider the verbiage as we do this. Because as my counterpart, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Dawkins, let us all know, words do matter. So, that's, that's, I know I probably did more than two minutes, thank you for, thank you for the time.
Alright, so Council, I just did confirm that it does not say warning shots. It says warning before shot. I mean, warning before shooting. It just has an image of, of, of a gun. So, it, it is, does not have warning shot. And of course, we've established from the beginning, this was not a request about defunding any police department. So, 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 yeah. So, absolutely. So, uh, Councilmember Davis?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to, um, highlight, I think Chief might have stood up to, to highlight it, um, that, um, as it pertains to the, the topic you just, uh, discussed, Mr. Mayor, uh, and the warning, the conversation about warning shots and things of that nature, um, that it is not my expectation that any of our law enforcement professionals would, uh, give someone a warning shot when returning fire. And I think that came up in our meeting on Friday, that there are times when an officer goes in to do something heroic and they're under fire. And so, um, expanding the policy and then communicating, um, the slight, um, differences between what's written and requested and what we actually do, I think is going to be an important part of the education campaign to make sure, um, that, um, that we're protecting both our law enforcement officials and as well as that we're operating within the continum- the, uh, continuum um, of, uh, you know, our force matrix that has already been established by the police department. So, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, uh, thank you, sir. Um, and Council, before we head two more rounds, I'll go to you, Councilmember Herr and then Ingram. I had you read, but no, we, we, we're kind of running behind and this could be a committee.
Yes, sir. And thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that I'm completely understand correctly, because this came up, now you can come back up, Chief. This came up at our meeting. And if we're speaking about what our, the city of Fayetteville's responsibility is, a police department is, if I understand correctly, uh, four point eleven point three, which is the deadly force procedure, we, we, we see what it says there, but the astron states, warning shots are not authorized. I thought that was a clear conversation piece that you told us that we do, we do that, make that practice.
That, that is true, but I believe Mayor's point is, it doesn't say warning shots, but we covered both. We covered the issue of warning shots and/or just warning. But to make it clear, it says when feasible, even if that warning is a verbal warning, our policy says when feasible, but the interpretation that I got from the eight can't wait says you absolutely have to warn somebody. And the point is, you may not get an opportunity to verbally warn somebody. So, not to misinterpret it. We want to be clear, we are not saying it's an absolute. Our policy says when feasible, which is part of our communication, we will try, we will announce, we will communicate. But there are times, as you know, in history, you might get ambushed, not have a second, a split second, whatever the encounter may be, come up upon gunfire and you cannot give a warning, whatever, shot, talk, whatever that may be.
Thank you for the clarity. Thank you for the clarity.
Alright, so, co- committee?
That looks like that'll be a great conversation. Now I'm going to pass it. And I know you guys will come back with something that protects our offices, but also shows that we are protecting our citizens. Full confidence in you. And I've went way over my five minutes.
Yes, you have.
So, alright, Council, so we got to really double time it. I think we've got to go into a closed session, may want to grab your, oh, well, Councilmember Wright, I'm sorry, sir, I'm sorry. Alright, quickly, you.
Uh, you even took some of my time now.
Well, you've been taking everybody's.
I ain't said nothing tonight.
Ah, go ahead.
Uh, but it, uh, anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quickly, um, trying to do this quickly and for our listening audience, um, we sent out an email to all the councils. So I'm sure, you know, you have read that and you have one of these resolutions in your packet as well. And I thought that this would be something good for the council to come out unified with, um, what's going on around the country and then to focus on what we want to do locally to maybe, uh, help impact, um, you know, that message. And so I'm going to read this for the listening audi- audience. Uh, resolution of the city of Fayetteville, whereas the city of Fayetteville, its mayor and the city council, and I want to say this too, this is a work session. None of this is graven in stone. Um, so I'm putting this out here, we can be discussed. Uh, some of you did respond and I'll talk about that as well. Uh, and all the employees are saddened and disheartened and concerned by the death of George Floyd, uh, Barack, Brianna Taylor and other tragic events around the country. And whereas the city of Fayetteville denounce all forms of racism, bigotry, hatred, violence, brutality and injustice against all. And whereas the city of Fayetteville continue to maintain a police department, uh, naturally, uh, accredited by the commission of the accreditation of law enforcement agencies. And whereas the police department is locally recognized as it exceeds all training requirements and is built on a culture of trust, transparency, accountability by fostering police communication relations through programs such as Coffee with the Cop, Youth Explorers Police, uh, Athletic League and its twice yearly Citizens Police Academy and Quarterly Faith Forum. And whereas the city of Fayetteville, uh, the chief of police and all members of the Fayetteville Police Department are dedicated and committed to the city of Fayetteville's core values of serving with respect. And whereas the mayor and the city, I'm sorry, and the city council supports the creation of a city review board to provide greater oversight, review, accountability to all, uh, except of po- expect, I'm sorry, uh, aspects of policy, but most specifically on any issues regarding the use of force, brutality, misconduct by members of the Fayetteville Police Department. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council in collaborations with all city of Fayetteville employees stand firm against all forms of racism, bigotry, hatred, violence, brutality and injustice against all. That the mayor and the city council will advocate for the creation of a citizens review board to provide greater oversight, review and accountability on all aspects of policies, uh, policing. But most specifically on any issue regarding the use of force, brutality, misconduct by members of the Fayetteville Police Department. And I wanted to put that out and to kind of give our support, um, about what's going on around the country and where we stand as a council and as a city. Uh, and if we have any remarks at this time, you can go ahead.
Do we have Councilman Davis in inducts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, overall, I like, um, the resolution. Um, I was thinking, um, that, um, it might be advantageous, um, that we start or begin to discuss what a citizens advisory board might look like. Because what I'm hearing a lot in the public is that the citizens want feedback. They want to be able to talk to the police department, the leaders. Um, and watching the PWC advisory board, the citizens advisory board operate, it is beneficial. As far as review goes, I think that's another topic that we're going to have to really flesh out in terms of the legal ramifications, in terms of accessibility to camera, things of those natures, uh, of things like that. But in terms of advising, I think it creates a great opportunity at ground level for our police force to stay connected to the actual population, our citizens whom they serve. We're discussing, how do we stay close to the citizens? How do we foster great relationships? And since we have a great police department that already worked so hard, that just creates another, uh, avenue of communication and partnership with our citizens and our police force. So I would hope that we would be willing to discuss, uh, what advisory board looks like, um, for, uh, the residents.
And certainly, um, can I address that?
Yes, sir.
Uh, but certainly, uh, we definitely going to have to do that. The research that I've done and throughout the country, the National Association of, uh, Civilian Oversight, uh, of Law Enforcements is a national board. They have very good information how to establish a review board or advisory board. We can really look into that step by step of how, how we, because, you know, uh, uniquely Fayetteville structured, our police department is a great one. It's not that we have to do a lot of internal changes, but to have that review board in place and do it the right way, I think the council needs to be, um, up on that as far as how it's being done around the country and it being successful. So we have that information, uh, and I can do, I can put some more information out to you for the read, the sentence stuff. And I agree to- totally with that.
Alright, Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't support the resolution unless, unless we change the wording to advisory. Uh, I, I don't want a, uh, review board and, um, and I, I, um, uh, this is something that we've got a, you know, this is, this is not something that we can rush through. This is, this is a three to six month process, because we got to get guidance from, from our professionals. And, uh, I agree with Councilmember Davis. I, I can support an advisory board, but then it's going to take months to figure out the criteria for a person to serve on it, um, and then what their powers are going to be. But definitely, I, I can't support a review board. Thank you.
Alright, so, uh, just to clarify this, Council, just to make sure I'm hearing this before we get too far down the track. So, the concept of some citizen board, um, between the two statements I heard so far, you were okay. Now what their powers are, what they're called, are the details. Okay, alright, so, and, and, you know, remember these councilmember requests, we're not going to have it all figured out in the five minutes.
Yes, sir.
But that, I just want to put that out there before we go debating too hard one way or another. Councilmember Ingram?
Yes, I, 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 I just, I think I have a question and a statement. So my question is, whose item is this?
Councilmember Wright.
Right, so my question is, and I'm just recalling what we ca- what my group talked about in policy wise, based off of the quo- the acts we've been getting from the community, our hands are up. We can't, we can't really do anything, right? So, that's why we're looking at advisory board. But once we started talking in our groups, it was, it, it kind of felt obsolete to even do an advisory board, because it was kind of like, um, just trying to, trying to please the masses in a sense. When we, when we know, when, if we get them in and get them set up, well, what can they do? And, and if their acts has been consistent in what they want to see outside of what our, our, our agency already does, I would just question, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just trying to question, what are they going to do? Because constitutionally, they can't necessarily get unless the state approves what they want to do. What, what is it that we're approving for them to do? Because I'm just trying, they're consistent in what they're asking. It's not changing.
You want me to respond to that?
Please do.
Sure. Um, in, in reality, in reality, we know what we're dealing with across the country. Um, and there are advisory boards or oversight boards all around the country as we speak in cities that's making a difference. Um, we know our limitations at a municipal level, that we would have to take our requests to the state level. And also, there are some changes that's coming from the national level. We're living in a time of transition. We're living in a time of change. We're living at a time that things that wasn't done last year, we're looking at things possibly can happen now, uh, in the future. So when you're talking about something as simple as setting up a review board, it's going to take time. Are we going to, we want to make sure the advisory board out, and, and just like Johnny says, I don't have a problem with calling an, an advisory, advisory board, because what the ability of that board, uh, can do is limited. And so, it would still have to go, um, through the police, um, you know, areas and also the state level if there's questions. But for so many years, for so many years, when police do something wrong, you had the police inspecting the police or the police, you know, investigating the police. And we've known how that came out, uh, historically, not, not, I'm not saying Fayetteville, but historically, that's what we're dealing with. And so, because we can be leaders, because we can be the example to other cities and other states across the country, we really do need to put this in place in a way where we'll, we'll feel comfortable and satisfied going forward working with our police chief and with our police officers. And we, we have a lot of these things in place when it talked about community policing, the police working with the community, uh, and all of those things. So I don't see a problem, and it's not about distrust, uh, distrust of the police department. Has nothing to do with that, because I totally trust our chief. What that, what this has to do, this is business. This is transparency. This is something that the community's been crying out for, for years. And so we have an opportunity to do that, but it's going to be limited as far as, as, uh, Councilwoman Ingram have said. You know, it's almost like, you know, what, what can we do? So, let's discuss this. We may need to do another, a work session to talk about it, do some more research and get the information out. But I think it's a great idea.
Okay, uh, Councilmember, woman Kinston?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, what I would like to recommend is to bring it back to the committees. The reason why I say that, as a proud union member, I want to make sure that if it's going to be done, that it is going to be done right. And I think that expanding and looking at what can be done to protect the police officers and their, uh, information and also what can be done to bring the citizens in as advisory board or review board, um, would be a great way to take it back to the committees and let the committee work through it itself. So, I think I have a unique situation as far as being sitting on that title.
Absolutely.
Yeah, let me say this too, and, you know, we have the mayor's signature on here, but, um, someone suggested, and I think it was, um, Councilman Herr, that this resolution, uh, should reflect the wishes of the entire council. You know, it's just not the mayor's resolution, it's the council's resolution. Once we do our research, once we get the information, once everybody's happy, everybody's signature can go on this resolution. Uh, whoever desires to vote will go on the resolution as going forth unanimously as a unified body.
And, and Council, remember, this requires some state legislative change for certain powers. Now for us to create whatever you create, depending on what you want them to do, but the traditional review board that everybody that has become the talking point requires state legislative action. And I ta- got called from Representative Zoka today who said the, the likelihood, regardless of the comments that were in the paper, of that happening during this session before they adjourn is slim to none. And so that could be something that we work on, get prepared, you know, council's already signed one of these before. It just didn't, didn't move after that, so. Alright, Councilmember Waddell?
We're living in a different.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Councilmember Wright, I want to thank you for your leadership in this, because we are. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um Councilmember Wright, I want to thank you for your leadership in this, because we are three weeks out from this event, and we are just now putting out a consolidated statement from this council, and so I want to thank you, thank you for your leadership. I do want to, I, I want to expedite this statement going out, because we are three weeks out from this event, and this council has not, I say again, has not made a consolidated statement against the injustices that we are seeing around the nation. I do think, I agree with Councilmember uh Kinston, that the details of the, the review board or the advisory board should go back to a committee for some, some fleshing out, and maybe that should be included, because the only caveat that I would say needs to be added to this, this resolution is there needs to be something actionable added to this resolution, and I think that the actionable portion is the creation of the two committees that the mayor has shared with us, and that the work will be done in those committees to establish an advisory board and to, or, or to look into whatever, whatever mechanism this council agrees to, to be able to meet the needs of, of bringing our citizen base into the process where our police policies are concerned. So again, thank you for your leadership on this.
Thank you.
All right, so council, we've, we've had, oh, Councilmember Banks McGlough.
That's the part I need some clarity on. When are we gonna get this signed and, and put out as our, our so- so- our commitment and solidarity to this cause? Because if we say and wait until the work session, that's August.
Let, let me say this, I'm sorry, I, I just want to respond to her.
That was my question.
Okay, I think we need to do this as soon as we possibly can. Uh we can tweak, we can tweak the, uh tweak the resolution with um the word, whether, whether it be an advisory or whether it be an oversight, really don't matter to me, uh but the work, yeah, we, the work is need to be, the work still needs to be done. So we, we can sign the resolution, but the work as far as how to put that in action has to take place.
I would ask that somebody would, would be willing to potentially suspend the rules, make a motion to adopt this resolution with the contingencies that we've discussed, and then we don't need to sub- oh, we're in a special meeting, we don't have, that's right, this is not a work session. So I would ask um Councilmember Wright that you would make a motion, and I'm prepared to second the motion, provided those two, those two instances are, are added.
You, you did have a question?
And this is, this will to include citizens, correct?
Yeah, the details of it, so I think, so, let me see that real quick. The, so, so guys, the resolution has a lot of whereas, okay, but the, what comes now therefore is where the, the meat and potatoes are, okay? So we are stating as a body, whereas, like individually, we've said it, I've said it, I'm, I'm for, against it, but as a body, this is the message that whereas the citizens employees are disheartened about what happened, whereas racism, bigotry, and hatred, whereas to maintain the police department national accreditation, whereas it exceeds all training requirements, whereas the chief of police and all members uh are dedicated to the core values of respect, and whereas the creation of a citizen review board to provide greater oversight accountability. Now you can add the word review slash advisory, but the now therefore is the real deal on that, but I, I agree, Councilmember Waddell, thank you, Councilmember Wright for, for that, but council, I hope we can do this in a way that sends a strong message, and we're working the details out, so I know we may not get it all the way there, but uh, uh we've gotta move on, y'all. We, we, we got some high-priced lawyers in the room. Yes, please, I saw that was a motion by Councilmember Wright, there's a second by Councilmember Waddell? Oh.
So. Before I second, so council-
So I, I would make the motion that the council adopt this resolution uh with the two facts that uh those boards will be established to um oversight and oversee the work that needs to be put in place in order for this resolution to become a living document.
And, and the changing to the advisory board.
So, so-
And the change from- It could be review slash advisory or-
I think if we, I think if we, if we are to get a unanimous resolution, I think we probably need to look at the verbiage advisory board, and we, we can then, as we work this, we can commit ourselves to the citizen base that we will continue to advocate for more, because we can't, when we sat in those, those sessions, we can create a, a review board today. We can create one, but it will frustrate the citizens, because they will have no, none of the things that they're asking for, will they be able to get, and it's not incumbent upon us to be able to give it to them, and so I don't want to frustrate our citizens. I don't want to placate them, and I don't want to pander to them. I want to do real work on their behalf. An advisory board, to Councilmember Davis's point, is extremely powerful, because PWC's advisory board runs PWC, period. And so, and so for, for that to be the case, we, let's not diminish the impact that an advisory board, that is more powerful for our citizens at this point than any review, review board that we could make for them.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Please.
So, yes, and I agree um wholeheartedly, and we'll, I have no problem with putting the word advisory board. Uh we need this in our city, uh and so here we, here we are. So, Mr. Mayor, I um commit to, I, I did the-
You moved to-
I moved to, she, she-
You moved to, so that's-
And so she was saying the two boards, I can't, you were saying the two-
That, that the details will be, you want to adopt the resolution.
So we've already, yeah, with the details to, to come up with the two committees that the mayor uh had already requested.
Absolutely, and I second that, and I second that, so that means that-
Y'all want me to go back over all that?
No, no, no.
No, I get it, and I second that, and I think, I, I second, I second.
Okay, so, so uh council, there's a motion by Councilmember Wright to approve the resolution with the uh adding of the word advisory, um and it's, and, and, and to um designate or, or to put on the, the, the plate of the two committees that we have established, external, external, uh for the details, that, that they're gonna have a lot of work to do, but there's a second by Councilmember Waddell. We've discussed this, let's vote, please. All right. I don't have a, I don't have a-
Uh David?
Oh, you, yeah? Push the green button. Make it official. All right, council, good work, good work, good work. Thank you, thank you, thank you, council.
I want to thank council as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright, Waddell, all councilmembers, y'all are doing great work. Um council, we need to go into closed session. I would uh grab our items, run in real quick. We got these, these attorneys. I don't know if y'all still gonna have a hour, guys, 'cause uh but we'll, we'll give you as long as you want, 'cause you get paid by the hour, so uh let's, let's, let's go and, I need a motion to go into closed session, and let's go and uh grab our items.
Make that motion to go into closed session.
What are you shaking your head for, Madam Attorney? No?
No, I was just gonna ask, there was an item related to the PWC transfer. Are you gonna move that to your regular meeting?
Please, count, yeah. So do we need any action to do that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, babe.
Do we, do we need a- I know, I know. We gotta, we gotta bust this corner up over. Do, do you need most, do we need any action to go in to, to move that uh PWC item?
Yes.
So, so.
Mayor Kovan, I'd like to make a motion that we move the PWC item six point zero-
Seven.
Six, so it's, I'd like to make a motion that we move the PWC item uh to our seven o'clock regular meeting.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilmember Ingram, there's a second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on, on that motion? All right, council, I look to you for your votes uh to move that item. Uh Councilmember Waddell, did you press?
I did.
Can you do it one more time? All right, all right. Uh, all right, motion carries. All right, now I need a motion to go into closed session, y'all. There's a motion by Councilmember Hare, there's a second by Councilmember Kinston, uh going to closed session for attorney-client privilege. Any discussion on a motion? All right, council, I look to you for your votes.
We take thirty seconds and go grab some food.
Sure, yes, ma'am. All right, uh can y'all vote before you go? Yeah, we gotta fix your button. Councilmember Hare and, okay, all right. All right, council, we'll go into closed session. We'll be right back.